All day.
Doors getting harder to open. Oh, man, who turned the heat off, Mayor? I didn't bring an actin', I apologize. You getting oxygen?
What?
Here's John, his, and I'll be right back.
All right, it is that appointed time. Call the 2-1-2-1 meeting of the Lincoln Park Mayor and City Council to order. If everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, which will be immediately followed by the invocation by Joe Salazar of Heart-to-Heart Ministry. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask everyone to please to alter their heads. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, Lord Jesus, Father God, Lord, we thank you, Lord, we thank you for the many blessings that you bring upon us. Father God, we thank you for the mayor of the city of Lincoln Park, city council, city manager, police department, fire department, and all the first responders, Lord, who are out there working, all city employees that are out there working every day to keep this city safe, to keep this city running, to keep things in shape for our wonderful city. Father God, we just want to say and we ask that you be with the city council, be with the mayor, that they make decisions today, Lord, on things coming up for our city, that they use wisdom, Lord, wisdom from you, and do things accordingly. Father God, I ask that you give strength to the family of Tricia Rail, mother of Jacob Rail, DPS supervisor, as they're going through a very difficult time right now. Father God, we ask that you be with that family, strengthen them, and help them through this, Lord. Lord God, we just want to say thank you for everything that you do for us and our city, and we pray this in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor, you did a great job in your initial Zoom outing. We appreciate that. And if we could have roll call, please.
Counselperson breeding?
President on the phone.
Dupre?
Yes.
Higgins?
Here.
Ross? Here. Salsedo?
Yes.
Hoben?
Here.
And Mayor Kartsch?
Here. Okay, again, welcome, and good evening, everyone. I was looking at the date today, being 2-1-2-1, it's kind of interesting, anyway, if you like that sort of thing, which I do. And it's very sad news when we found about Tricia Rail had passed, and as the Reverend said, we all give our condolences as Jacob and Ron go through this terrible loss. We have, just prior to this meeting, we had a public hearing, and the public hearing was for the community development block grant five-year study or program that was going to be, that's being developed right now. And it was for public input. But if you did not get the opportunity to show up at that meeting or to listen to it, there still is an opportunity for you to have your voice heard and what the items that the city should be concentrating on as far as community development block grant goes. This is for low-income, low to moderate income families in programs that will benefit that and things that are done in the city. There is an opportunity for you to still contribute, though. At the city's website, the city's Facebook page, the Parks Direct Facebook page, there is a link for a survey. It's from Survey Monkey. Take you a couple minutes to complete, but the more people that we hear from on this, the better. So it's an opportunity to do so, so please, give an opportunity. We've had over 100 people reply so far, but last I checked, we have some 37,000 people that are in the town, so we have definitely room for more, for more opinions on this. But if you're looking for a way to have input into the future where the money's are going to be going for, this is your opportunity to have your voice heard. So do that, look to our city website for this, and give it a shot. And please ask others to do the same. Share the link if you're able to, and we'll get some more information, because we want to definitely hear from you as we're going through and doing this. All right, and as part of my remarks tonight, I have a mayoral appointment. It's actually a reappointment. It's Donald McTaggart is hereby reappointed to the Lincoln Park Housing Commission, term to expire December 31, 2025. Donald was already, his term had just expired, so this is a reappointment. And with that, I do not have anything, we will move on to the consent agenda. Before I go and read this, the second item, which was to attend training, has been removed as there's some complications due to the COVID with the scheduling of it, so we will hope to get that accomplished at another time. Resolve that the following items listed under the consent agenda be approved as presented to the mayor and city council: One, approved minutes/regular meeting held January 19, 2021; Two, participation residential rehab sewer lateral program; And three, approved pawnbroker's license, 1-4-5-6 Fort Street.
I'll move.
Court.
Okay, any discussion? The court called a roll.
Counselperson's breeding?
Yes.
Dupre?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Salsedo?
Yes.
Hoben?
Yes.
And Mayor Kartsch?
Yes. The first action item that we have is the where we're working on the mid-year budget amendment. And it has a cover letter from our Finance Director, Lisa Griggs, which I am going to for the public here, I'm going to, I'm going to read through. So in background, in accordance with the Uniform Budget and Accountings Act, it is necessary to adjust the current year's budget based on projected revenues and expenditures for all departments. After careful review, adjustments have been made to the appropriate cost centers and in budget impact. The proposed budget amendment has general fund expenditures exceeding revenues with an estimated use of fund balance in the amount of $502,442. A use of fund balance was anticipated this year with the original budget estimates to be just under $300,000. Pandemic has caused many revenue shortfalls over the past year, but fortunately, not as severe as originally thought. While the use of fund balance is higher than the original budget, there have been some additional revenue sources that have helped ease the burden on the city. These include a COVID-19 grant from the Department of Justice for required supplies, as well as COVID-19 funds from the state of Michigan to offset payments for police and fire hazard pay and emergency operation payroll expenses totaling $954,000. These funds have been critical in helping the city to deplete our fund balance, not deplete our fund balance. Below are some of the other key changes to the general fund budget. The largest revenue decrease is in the 25th District Court. Current estimates call for a reduction of $1.1 million in lost revenue. This is due to reduced tickets writing, as well as the lower collection rates by the court. We are hopeful that these revenues will begin to increase and eventually stabilize to pre-pandemic amounts in the near future. Both Parks and Recreation and Community Center have reduced revenues due to closures programs of facilities of $191,843. Some expenses have been reduced in both departments to offset lost revenue. Towing revenue was down $52,000 due to the reduction in the rubber toes that would be realized with traffic enforcement. The emergency management department budget has been put in place at $20,000 per year to allow for COVID-related cleaning supplies and other necessary supplies due to the pandemic. The election expenditure budget was increased due to additional costs for the presidential election, as well as some necessary equipment needs that are offset by a technology grant received in accounting for in the revenue line item. The estimated use of fund balance will continue to be monitored as the year continues as the goal is always not to utilize any of it. Any saving that can be achieved for the remainder of the year will offset that amount. The other funds for the city that have adjustments include the major and local street funds. Revenues are exceeding the original budget amount, which is good news. The Act 51 payment received, both funds have exceeded original estimates. This will allow the city to carefully plan increasing road repairs that were put on hold with the uncertainty of revenue estimates due to the pandemic. The water and sewer fund has increased revenues and expenditures, which are all related to the SRF reimbursements received, as well as expenditures for these projects that were not originally included in the budget. The recommended judgments to the budget reflect those changes the administration has been made aware of up to this point. Any further adjustments that are significant may be brought to the mayor and council to approve through the course of the fiscal year or will be adjusted at year end. So the resolution. Resolve that the Director of Finance, BN, is hereby authorized to adjust the general appropriated revenues and expenditure budgets by cost center for fiscal year 2020-2021 as submitted.
I'll move.
Any discussion? Court call the roll? Court call the roll?
Counselperson's breeding?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Dupre?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Salsedo?
Yes.
Hoben?
Yes.
And Mayor Kartsch?
Yes. Next item has a cover letter from our DPS Director, John Kazoo, and it has to do with the extension of a contract. Hydracorp is a professional service corporation that has been servicing the city of Lincoln Park since 2017 with their residential and commercial cross-connection control program. This program is required by the state of Michigan Department of Environmental, Great Lakes, and Energy called Eagle Water Bureau Cross Connection Control to maintain the safety of potable water system. Eagle has mandated that every city comply with the commercial and residential monitoring. Hydracorp fulfills these regulations and monitor requirements with their contract. Original contract went out to bid October 11, 2017, and the contract was awarded by mayor and council on November 20, 2017. Because of the cost, this program cost is set up as a 10-year program. We have completed only three years to date. Hydracorp's three-year contract is expired. Hydracorp has offered to extend the contract for the next two years at the same rate. So the resolution is, be it resolved that the 2017 contract to Hydracorp Incorporated of Troy, Michigan, for the commercial and residential cross-connection program be extended for the next two years at the same rate of their current contract.
I'll move.
Okay, discussion?
For the chair?
Mr. Higgins, Councilman Higgins, I heard you first, go ahead.
Thank you, I'd like to have, I've had citizens complain about this company. I'd like to know John's view of the company.
We have John Kazoo, go ahead, sir.
Mayor and council, John Kazoo. Hydracorp is one of two companies that provide this service in the state of Michigan. The other one is a little bit north of Flint, and in 2017, they chose not to bid on this contract. Then Hydracorp does basically southeastern Michigan. Anyways, we had initial startup issues, which in a program like this, I would anticipate, it's my belief that all of those have been resolved and worked out to the betterment for the city. And yes, I'm very happy, they do send out prior notices to the affected areas, and they go through house by house to make this, these inspections. They're doing the back prevention installation on the garden hoses, which is required by state of Michigan, and they also do our end of So yes, Councilman Higgins, I am impressed with them, and as such, I recommend you guys, the mayor and council, extend their contract for an additional two years. Thank you.
All right, was that Councilwoman Ross that I also heard?
Dupre, that is also my question, and my authority, yes, so I'm good, thank you.
Okay, is there further discussion? Hearing none, then court call the roll?
Counselperson's breeding?
Yes.
Hoben?
Yes.
Dupre?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Salsedo?
Yes.
Yes. Next item also is from our DPS Director, John Kazoo. And in background, as you are aware, the city of Lincoln Park as you are aware, the city of Lincoln Park opened bids on Wednesday, January 20, 2021, for the above referenced project, which is a recommendation for contract work for the replacement roof of the DPS dispatch office. Two bids were received, one for $7,500 and another for $50,000. Hennessy Engineers is recommending the bid from William Molnar Roofing Company in Brownstown Township, Michigan, in the amount of $7,500, plus an additional 20-year warranty plus an additional 20-year warranty of an additional $2,000 be accepted for a total of $9,500. Just going back to and it looks like the $50,000 bid was through Decima LLC. So, be it resolved that the mayor and city council hereby award the contract for the roof replacement for the DPS dispatch office to WM Molnar Roofing Company, as submitted, with the extended 20-year warranty for any and all work at a total cost not to exceed $9,500. Be it further resolved, the mayor and council authorize the funds to be taken from account number 410001983000.
I'm going to move with a question for support.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
I'm just very curious if John can explain why there's such a vast difference between these two bids. I don't quite understand how it could be that big of a, you know.
$40,000 difference?
Yeah, yeah.
Mayor and council, John Kazoo again. I can only speculate and guess why that is the case. And my guess, and I want to say that it is a guess, that they did not look at the bid package. The office in question is only 10 foot by 12 foot. It's a little bit bigger than a shed. I think the second contractor thought it was a re-roofing of the entire building.
That would make sense.
Okay, further discussion?
Just through the chair, I have several inquiries myself.
Go ahead, sir.
This is Councilman Salsedo, I know this is only a 10 by 12, I just found out earlier today, but this additional warranty, what was the original warranty, Mr. Kazoo, without this additional $2,000?
The original warranty was only one year for this roof, and for 20, for the 20-year warranty, it's $2,000. So without the so without the additional $2,000, all we would receive is one-year warranty.
All right, so just hear me out on this. So there was, prior to the bidding, there were several quotes that were received, but they didn't provide a certified bid, I get that. So I actually called Molnar today, they said most steel roofs, their warranty is anywhere from 20 to 30 years. That's why I questioned what the original warranty was. So I'm thinking on a 10 by 12, we're going to rip down the old roof, replace it with plywood, as needed, put feathers on, for $9,500, I have my
Better, better.
You know, I'm just wondering what the other bids were that weren't certified for a 10 by 12 piece of roof. So that's
Well, the other, the other well, that also includes a metal roof. But let me back up to your question. Earlier in the summer, I had approached three different contractors to quote this work, because I thought it would be under $5,000 myself. Now, I don't have a whole lot of roofing experience, but I solicited quotations. One quotation was, I believe, $4,700. The second one was $9,500, and then there was a third one, which was $11,000. So I thought I would be able to go back to the mayor and council and award the low red at $4,700. Well, the $4,700 quotation was revised to be $12,000, which meant all three quotations were above $5,000, which then put me into a different category, meaning I had to put it out for bid. That's why this package was put together and put out for bid. And you are correct, those three that gave me the quotations, none of them submitted a bid.
Thank you very much.
Are you thinking that this bid that you did receive is reasonable, then? The one that you put in for the resolution?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay, what, I'm sorry, who was, who was next, who wants, who else? Councilwoman Ross, go ahead.
Thank you. The, the, I like the idea of the extended 20-year warranty, but I'd like to know, does that include parts and labor? And is that through the
It includes
I'm sorry, John.
It includes everything. It includes everything. Yes, ma'am.
And we would go through the contractor, not the manufacturer, or is it through the manufacturer?
It's through the contractor, and his 20-year is with the manufacturer.
Okay.
But we would go to the William Molnar Company for our 20-year warranty.
Okay.
Anything else, Councilwomen, are you all set?
I'm, I'm done, ma'am.
Okay, anyone, any further discussion? All right, court call the roll?
Counselperson Higgins?
Yes.
Breeding?
Yes.
Dupre?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Salsedo?
No.
Hoben?
Yes.
And Mayor Kartsch?
Yes. Next item, we have a cover letter from Doreen Christian, our Director of Office and Community Planning and Development. And it is to authorize design explicit bids for the CDBG 46 budget year road improvements. And in background, it's, mayor and council adopted the CDBG budget for the fiscal year 2021 on April 20, 2020. Funding for street improvements was included in that budget. To expedite the process so that construction may be completed this construction season, I am requesting that Hennessy Engineers be authorized to prepare the road design and engineering specifications, as well as bid documents for the 2021 CDBG Road Improvement Project, and have authorizations, explicit bids, with a not to exceed cost of $31,500. Project area is to be determined, but we will, but will fall in the low to moderate income areas of the city. The work is estimated to be within budget amount of $454,000, including engineering and construction services costs. So the resolution is, whereas the mayor and council adopted the 2020/21 Community Development Block Grant budget on April 20, 2020, with funding allocated for street and utility repairs. And whereas we wish to proceed with this project and bid it out this winter so we can start construction this spring, therefore, be it resolved that Hennessy Engineering Incorporated is authorized to prepare design and engineering specifications, as well as bid documents for the 2020/21 CDBG Road Improvement Project, and have authorization, explicit bids, with a cost not to exceed $31,500. Funds to come from CDBG account number 249-046-75519 Streets and Utilities.
I'll move.
A discussion? And John, if you could mute your, there you go. Is there discussion on this, I'm sorry?
No, I'm sorry, I was just going to say I was having a hard time hearing, but thank you.
There you go, all right, then court call the roll?
Counselperson Ross?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Breeding?
Yes.
Dupre?
Yes.
Salsedo?
Yes.
Hoben?
Yes.
And Mayor Kartsch?
Yes. Okay, and then the last action item also is from Doreen Christian, our Director of Community Planning and Development, Parks Recreation. And it has to do with the Community Development Block Grant CARES Act Small Business Grant Program. And we can just do the resolution. Resolve that the following businesses be approved for participation in the CDBG CARES Act Small Business Grant Program. Funds to come from CARES Act 2019 program year of the CDBG budget, account number 249-001-976001. And it's Actron Security Alarms Incorporated, 1056 Dix, $10,000. Ranson Incorporated, doing business as Rattler Sports Bar, 1432 Fort, $10,000. Tijuana Mexican Kitchen, 1679 Dix, $20,000. Be further resolved that Doreen P. Christian, Director of Community Planning and Development, is hereby authorized and directed to process the applications.
I'll move.
Discussion?
Through the chair?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I have a question, one of these businesses hasn't been open in a, in a day. And I was wondering why we're approving for a business that hasn't been open in a while? Has somebody
I can answer that for you, Councilman Higgins, this is Doreen Christian.
Thank you.
The one business has not been open since COVID because they do not serve food, and they have not been able to open under the LCC rules and guidelines. And as soon as they can, they will open. They've just been waiting for the governor to open up the guidelines.
Okay, the business I'm referring to was, was closed long before COVID. Now, maybe they were planning on opening up, and maybe, and that'll be a good thing, and I'm not complaining about that. I just want to know how are they planning on opening? And how did they fall on if they haven't been an existing, ongoing business?
Well, they have to submit financials. They have to submit financials of what their
I'm sorry.
Of their, their past tax records. I didn't, I think, Doreen, didn't they have to show that they were, what their revenues were and what the lost revenue was according to the I think they had to give tax file, tax records, too, did they not?
Yes, tax records, income and expenses. They had to supply those base statements. And every business that was in there had paid their business registration fees and everything else, and if we're talking the same business, he paid his LCC fee, too. And his taxes and his water, too. Yep, everything's been paid up in full.
So in the end, even with the limited amount of operation, he met the guidelines, the business met the guidelines. the business met the guidelines of, of the requirements. Doreen, do you have anything further to add? Done that?
No. No, just that he provided all three businesses, provided for everything that was required to be an eligible business, and it was reviewed by the five committee members. And they went through all the paperwork, and that was the decision of the committee members.
Okay. And just, um, well, does anyone else have anything for discussion?
Through the chair?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
I guess it, it makes me think if, if any, any one of these businesses who get these grants, um, happen to close permanently, are, do they have to pay that money back?
According to the guidelines of HUD, they are, they are to show from the time the COVID period starts, so that's March, on what this money that they are being granted would be offset. So even though the bills had been paid out of pocket or whatever, they could offset these bills with that grant money. And they have to provide information on what it was to pay off. And it cannot be pay taxes or anything to the system. But anything that is a normal constant business, it can be used for. So I'm going to say that most of them are paid off before they even got this recent one that they're getting now.
Okay, one of the, one of the time here. Councilwoman...
So really, they don't have to pay it back, is what we're getting at, though?
No, it's a grant.
It's a grant.
This is a, they, they are going to receive a W-9 for that. They're going to have to show that as income for the year they get it.
Okay.
And they will be paying taxes on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Back was there, before I go back to Councilman Higgins, who, I'm sorry, was it? Councilwoman Duprey, was that?
Yeah, I was just curious on, um, Tijuana's got $20,000 and Order Two got $10,000. Is that because they're, they're asked for more or they qualified for more?
The grants range...
They do not ask for the money.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay.
I'm sorry, they do not ask for the money. It, it all is, is under an eligibility type factor. They're going to be showing us the revenues, their expenses, and the committee is the one who decides in eligibility and the scoring on how much money they're, they need to survive.
Okay, thank you.
All right, then, Councilman Higgins, did you have, did you have more?
Um, but the business that I was requesting and the information on, it said, um, a name, and then it says they operate as. Is it possible that they're getting the money and they're using it on something else other than that address? But that...
No, they have to provide documentation that shows that that's what they spent it on. If they do spend it on something and don't provide the proper documentation, they will have to return the grant in full. That's going to be causing a federal offense by lying to us.
Okay, so further from, further from council? Just...
One more question, please. This does not cost the city money, correct? This is a grant that's given to us, and then we distribute it as needed, so...
Yeah, it was, yeah. Community Development Block Grant CARES, which was, came to the, as part of, I think it was $500,000 package, Doreen? Or was it, I think it was 619,000. But $300,000 of that money that, that came from the, came from HUD was for the small business grants that we're talking about.
Yes.
And how much is still remaining, Doreen? Do we have?
Through the chair, Your Honor?
Hold on, one second.
It's written on the front of the, um, the agenda statement, sir. How much is that? It's 155? Five, yes. We're leaving 145 available. 145 available.
Oh, okay. I missed that part of it. The council president, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I think the concern is here, and I think it's well established that we already know that this establishment was not open prior to COVID. So we're wondering, say in two months from now, it doesn't open again, I think that's the concern we're thinking about, what happens to the money then? But I think it's been all spelled out. So I can see the concern of all, but we'll just see how it plays out. That's just my comment.
Okay, sir, is further discussion? Court call the roll.
Councilperson Ross?
Yes.
Duprey?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Salsito?
Yes.
Chauvin?
Yes.
And Mayor Carres.
Yes. Okay, now we move into accounts and claims payable. These first two items are going to read, the checks have already been released due to the due date. So resolve that accounts and claims payable for those items greater than $25,000 be approved as follows. DTE Energy, December 2020, electric and gas and streetlights, $65,000, $63.97. Blue Cross, Blue Shield, February 2021, retiree med, ad plans, retirees and actives, $205,875.28. District Court, February 2021, monthly payment, $49,255.17. November Utility Waste Water, Jan. 2021, excess flow charges. And November 2020, sewage usage fee, $235,239.44. EJ USA Incorporated, purchase of fire hydrants, valve box tops and bases for water department, GLWA, December 2020, water billing, $188,448.23. Hennessy Engineers Incorporated, general consulting, pays or pavement evaluation, retention basin letter response, 10-year road program, DTE gas main replacement and meter change outs, site plan reviews, construction management fees for building department, water main replacement and dry 75, sewer bulkhead repair, 2019 road reconstruction, 2020 SRF sewer rehab, 2020 CDBG intersection improvement, 2020 concrete reconstruction, 2020 utility pavement replacement, $61,974.46. City Revview, December 2020, dumping SVC, $29,639.8.
Support?
Discussion?
Who was the mover on that?
I was, Councilwoman Ross.
Thank you.
Okay, you got supporter?
That was Councilwoman Greading.
Yes, okay, very good. Discussion? Court call the roll.
Councilperson Ross?
Yes.
Greading?
Yes.
Duprey?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Salsito?
Yes.
Chauvin?
Yes.
And Mayor Carres.
Yes. All right, we've reached the time for a city manager's report. Mr. Grzan?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. So the first thing I want to touch on is that City Hall has now been open, um, we, for a couple weeks now. Things seem to be moving reasonably smoothly. I do want to remind everybody that there are new protocols in place, may come to City Hall, and it will take more time to get in and get through. Wait times are going to be longer than you might be used to. So if you can, still utilize the Dropbox or online payments or pay by mail. If you can do business without coming into City Hall, you're going to be in better shape than if you have to come in. So also, just a quick little update on some of our upcoming labor things. We are making some progress on our administrator association agreement. We also expect some progress with our patrol unit coming up here in the near future. Just a heads up for everybody, over the last week or so, DPS has been battling multiple water main breaks. It's been a significant issue, I think. It seems as though we had a spike in pressure from GLWA towards the end of last week, which has caused some issues. But if anybody happens to run across a suspected water main break after hours, just because you can't get ahold of the DPS doesn't mean we won't check it out. You need to make sure you call the police department's non-emergency line, 313-381-1800, and report it so that the PD can get ahold of DPS. Also, over the last week and going through into this week, we are in the middle of testing for our clerical eligibility list. We've had a number of people come through already, and we have, I think, about nine more to test this week. It's taken us longer just because we can only do smaller groups. But we do have a couple positions we need to fill at this point, so that's good that we're moving forward there. We are in budget season, so just a quick shout out to finance, they've been doing an excellent job trying to rangle, getting budgets for department heads, getting capital improvement project forms, and just trying to keep that moving. I'll end briefly, just touching, we, myself, the mayor, and Lisa Griggs had a very productive meeting with the Treasury Department. We met with Deputy Treasurer Joyce Parker, just kind of touch base on how things are going in the city, and now that we are, you know, a number of years removed from having an emergency manager. But the Treasury still does like to keep an eye on what's going on and if there's ever any chances for help. So we are continuing our partnership with Treasury. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions anybody might have.
Through the chair?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Thank you. James, you mentioned that the clerical position you're testing for, is, is that the reason why it's not on the website?
Um, yeah, the posting is closed at the moment.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to double check.
Through the chair?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Have we had any chance, again, any chance of going in well, Bogdanik and Mechanic for the DPS?
Uh, we have not had a whole lot of interest lately in that position. But I, I think some sort of active recruitment will be necessary in order to secure somebody for that position.
Okay.
Through the chair, Your Honor?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Hey, hello, James. Since we're talking about testing, what about testing for the DPS part-time positions? Have you, anybody come through for that?
Um, what we're doing is we're going to get through the full-timers first, start interviewing there, and also see if any of them might, you know, if, if there's good fits as well. We've, we've actually been able to put together a, a pretty decent-sized pool, so we're hopeful that we'll be able to find some within there.
Thank you.
Anything further from council for the city manager? All right, hearing none. Then we're going on to our department head report. This time, we have our librarian, Nicole Kessler, here. Nicole, it's all yours.
Hello. Yeah, I'm happy to report the library has reopened to the public, but in a very limited capacity. A lot of libraries in our network are calling it grab and go. So basically, you can come in, browse for books, and then check out. But currently, we don't have any seating for the public so that they can't stay in the building and read. We do have three computers open, but there is a 15-minute time limit. There's strictly for printing, and the computers are cleaned after, you know, it sanitized after every usage. But, yeah, we've had a lot of patrons that have been eager for us to reopen from doing curbside delivery. We have, are providing curbside delivery for the people that do not feel comfortable coming in to pick up their books. And in the past year, you know, since we've been doing a lot of curbside delivery and we've been closed at various times, we have had a dramatic rise in the ebook usage. It has more than doubled in the last year. And throughout the library network, for the first time this past year, there's been over a million checkouts for the ebooks. So that's something that's really taken off. And since we haven't been able to provide programming, we are, have on the website, our library website now, the Creative Bug site. And that's a service that, with the sign-in, with the library card and PIN number, patrons can access a variety of craft programs and art programs that they can do from home, since we're not able to provide any in-house programming at the moment. And then we're in the planning stages right now for the summer reading program. And the theme this year, from, you know, the National Library Association, is tailes, T-A-I-L-S. It's tails, T-A-L-E-S. So, you know, it's, um, it's going to be themed around animals, and, you know, we have plenty of animal-themed books in the library, and our programming is going to be geared towards that. At this stage, you know, we're looking more at virtual programming that can be accessed through Zoom or Facebook Live, since we're not sure yet, you know, how many of the public will be able to gather. But kids will be able to track their books read from our website, and there should be a lot of virtual games and programs available there. But that's about it for this time, unless there's any questions.
Okay. The people that go up to the computers, are they allowed to sit down for the 15 minutes or?
Yes, yeah. That's the only seating in the library right now. They can't sit down to use the computer, but that's about all we have available to the public. It's, you know, mostly just the browsing for the books and then grabbing what people need.
Oh, just, I mean, making the most of, of a bad situation. Thank you. Is, any questions, any questions for Nicole? All right, Nicole, you continue to do a great, great job for us. We thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Now we will move on to citizen communications. James, if you would free up the citizenry, or unmute, rather. Is there anyone that wishes to address mayor and council? Okay, so I'm not, not hearing anyone. We'll move on to oral reports of the, of the council. Council President Salsito.
Oh, good evening, everybody. Just, I want to touch on what James also mentioned in regards to the water main breaks. Give our DPS workers a big hand. I mean, it's cold outside, they're out there. The only negative, I guess, is when people call or text, "And when will my water be turned on?" Well, I don't know that, and I know the DPS can't predict that either. So my hope is that when they do attack a water main break, the water won't be on any longer than it has to. So if, oh, John Kuzin wants to comment on that later, that's okay, but great job, DPS, that's all I'm saying. But for most residents that have contacted me, they've been patient, and the water, they tell me when the water got turned on, so I'm happy for that. But the only other thing I have, Your Honor, is I have a good friend who happens to be friends of Mayor Odette in Woodhaven, and I met with her last week with a couple of her staff members in regards to her dog park. She gave me a tour of her animal shelter. She gave me the breakdown of her rules and regulations for the dog park and all the color photos of it. It's sitting on two... regulations for the dog park and all the color photos of it. It's sitting on two acres of land, which is, she has a big dog park area and a small dog park, small dog park area. So, she gave me a lot of ideas and some information, and I look forward to checking all that out and maybe reporting in a couple weeks. But that's all I have. Everybody stay warm and stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman reading?
Yes, I want to offer my condolences to the royal family in the, in the passing of their family member. This is the first I've heard of it. And then on a lighter note, I guess it's a lighter note or happier note, last week I went in and had surgery done in Windott Hospital, and the doctors were fantastic and the nurses were just wonderful the whole time. And the food wasn't bad at all. So, my kudos to the Windott Hospital staff for the, for taking care of me while I was in there. So, that's all that I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. They have had a difficult job this, this past year, definitely. Councilman Higgins?
Yes, I too look to give my condolences to the royal family. They have, they have meant so much to Lincoln Park, and our hearts are, are out there for you. My condolences. I'd like to remind everybody, we have the Chocolate Walk coming up, February 13th. It's going to start at the Park Restaurant. I believe this is our fourth year, maybe our fifth year of the Chocolate Walk, and it is a really cool event. You start at the park, you'll get a map, and basically it'll bring you to several of our businesses throughout town. You'll get a piece of chocolate. You get to find out some businesses in Lincoln Park that you didn't even know exist, and see some cool stuff. And then you bring your map back and you get a sticker, and then you come back to the Park Restaurant, and then you put all your names in a drawing, and you may even win something in the end. So, come on out and let's make this, COVID coming to an end, and we can go out and see some people and go to a business. Let's be safe, let's wear our masks. So, let's participate and let's have a good time and help our Lincoln Park businesses because right now, they need it. And speaking of that, we have a new business in town that I found. I think it's a really cool business. It's called Blessed and Natural. It's at 1168 Fork Street. They have homemade soap, homemade candles, only made with natural products. Very, very cool stuff. Maybe you'll do some printing of some shirts and other things. I recommend anybody go down there and give them a look, and like to welcome them to the city. Also, lastly, I'd like to remind everybody, school is open and we have snow and ice on the ground. Please drive careful and keep your eye out for the little ones because they're excited about going, going to school, and they're not watching you, so we have to watch them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Tobin?
Um, well, I, I don't have much to say. I am very thankful that we didn't get hit with the nor'easter like the east coast did. We are kind of annihilated right now. I always expected, and we got very little, so I'm very grateful for that. Like talking about the Chocolate Walk, I'm going out tomorrow with Tim Murray, and we are going to see how many businesses we can get involved. We're going to set it up so it is going to be sanitized, and the pens will be sanitized when you come in. There'll be social distancing. We are actually going to try to pull a winner that day. We're not, don't know if it's going to happen or not. But it is a fun event, so I suggest you guys all try to come out, invite your neighbors out. It might be brisk, but we can all use the fresh air, and we can definitely use a little exercise, I think. With that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Ross?
Thank you, Your Honor. Because we talked about the employment a little bit, the openings a little bit, I want, that's what I want to start out with. I want to encourage everyone to, if you know someone looking for employment, either as a firefighter, a mechanic, a police officer, or a part-time laborer in, in DPS, have them look, look up the information on our website. There, those, I know that those four jobs are posted on our website, and I can't think of a better way than word of mouth to get the word out. So, that's for a firefighter, a mechanic, a police officer, and part-time laborer in DPS department. I also want to share with you some information that I'm, I'm passing along from the Historical Commission. I don't, can you guys see that?
Uh-huh.
Okay. That's the Lincoln Park History Book. It, there, there are 45 copies available. They are $20. And with, this year being Lincoln Park Centennial, the Historical Commission thought it would be a good idea to remind everyone that these are still available. I flipped through it, and there's, there's a lot of just interesting information, and it is, it's got, it's got just as many pictures as it does the, the information. So, that's available. I know that we're asking everyone to use the drop boxes when you can. But if you are coming in, I know that these books are available at the Treasurer's Office. If you're coming in to pay your taxes, I figured that might be perfect time to, to buy it. The Heritage Plaza bricks there at the, at the museum, those are available this year in eight-by-eight square bricks only. They, it says that they are doing this for the centennial with a special 100-year centennial logo, logo on them. And so, with the eight-by-eight square bricks this year only, the cost will, is reduced from $150 to $125. Orders for the bricks need to be submitted by April the 16th to have them ready for the dedication that they will have as they normally do their Memorial Day dedication and bell ringing ceremony there at the museum. You, let's see, what else is there? Oh, they're doing a refundable bottle and can drive. So, if you're interested in donating your, your refundables, you can call the Historical Commission, or I'm sorry, the museum, and a Historic, Historical Commissioner will come by and pick those up. So, if you want any more information on the book, the bricks, or the refundable donations, you can call 313-386-3137. That's the number for the museum, or email lp.museum@gmail.com. Also, also, I understand that they need a commissioner. So, if there's anyone out there looking for some way to volunteer, there is a commissioner position open on the, on the Historical Commission. And I know that the application for that you can find under "How Do I?" And if you look under the tab "Apply For," there is a tab called "Various Positions on Boards and Commissions." Let's see, and that's it for the Historical Commission. I do want to add that, I know we all know that Simple Recycling is still not picking up. They've suspended service because of COVID. But if you have usable, donateable items, they do have a partner company that will schedule a pickup, and you can contact them at www.donatestuff.com. And I figured that might, that might help. I know I, I miss the pickups from Simple Recycling, so. Other than that, that's it. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Dupree?
Yes, hello. Couple things. While we were on break between meetings, I took the survey for CDBG. Took five minutes. It was very easy to do, and I posted it on my Facebook page.
Oh, very good.
So, and I can share it on the Lincoln Park Residence Page that I'm a moderator. So, it was very, I don't know, it wasn't hard to read for me. They were saying it was hard to read. But it's out there. It took me really less than five minutes, and they asked some pretty interesting questions. So, I suggest people check it out. I'd like to reach out to the families in need. The TFAP Food Distribution will be February 10th, which is the second Wednesday. We do it each month from noon to 3:00 at the Chandler Center in Lincoln Park. If you're looking to volunteer, give me a holler. You can always use more volunteers. And today I happened to go to our local Ace Hardware and was referred to Ford Street Plumbing. Never heard of them before. I've passed the building a million times, but had never paid attention. Went in, great help, very friendly, knowledgeable. We're having a little, my house is built in 1950, so we're having a few retro issues. They're very helpful and willing to actually make me something to make this thing work. So, after we went through all of those pleasantries, I introduced myself and let him know that I was a city councilwoman, and thank you so much for having such a supportive, friendly business in Lincoln Park. And that's it. Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Very nice. We have Committee Improvement Commission met last week, and part of the things that they give out is a Pride and Property Award. And through work with Dorian Christian and the chairman Steve Crowell, a new award has been designed for those Pride and Property Awards. It dates back to the, the old awards. You give somebody a plaque, and it's hidden on the outside of the, on the inside of the house someplace or thrown in a drawer someplace. What this is, is a miniature version of the city seal that says Pride and Property on it, and it has holes that are put in it, silver. And I meant to bring it, but I did, but of course I didn't. I'll put it on our, on our page. And, but what this is, is about the size of a, of a CD that if you chose to, you could mount it on the, on your, on the front of your house, fax it to your, not your mailbox, I know that that's illegal, but put it someplace close or put it on your, your store door just to let people know that come over that you've been awarded, you've been awarded. What the Pride and Property is, is people that take extraordinary care of their, of their homes to where it really is, really nice homes in your neighborhood. If you have some of those that are, you think would be worthy of contention, just send me, I serve on the committee too, send me an email at mayor@citylp.com, and I'll bring it to the attention of the, of the members of the committee, and they'll take a, take a look and see if that could be one of the future recipients. The recipient for, for January this year is 1414 Wilson Street, so 1414 Wilson. And there'll be, be more to come, but forward that if you, if you can. James Cruzan mentioned that we, we met with, with Treasury, and since we've been in receivership and coming out of receivership, they have truly worked with us in attempt to make things better in, in Lincoln Park. And that was the same thing with this meeting here, is that they're looking at ways to, to help us out. I mean, of course, nothing $100 million wouldn't, wouldn't hurt us, but they're not willing to, to do that, but they're willing to, to help us on, on different projects that we had. We also met with the, with Judge Clifton in the court and with the Dua Group in attempts to find out where excess water is going and, and how we could have a detailed explanation of what that is. So, we're working behind the scenes to, to make things better here. And with that, I really do hope that you would do the, the Chocolate Walk. I think it's actually been closer to seven years than five that, that we've been, we've been doing this. But we need to start celebrating the city again as we're in the businesses that are in here. It's, I think as businesses start opening up, we're going to see some that, that didn't make it as, as a result of this, but we should celebrate the ones that are, that are still here with us. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So do you.
Go for it.
Okay, court call the roll.
Are you Councilperson Celso?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Reading?
Yes.
Dupree?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Holvin?
Yes.
And Mayor.
Yes. Good night, everyone.
Good night.